Go ahead, Ben. Start it here. I need a motion to approve the agenda as presented. You go have a second. That's you, please. Yes. Moving on, we've got some action items for closed sessions, specifically closed session minutes from October twenty-sixth of twenty fifteen, November twelfth, twenty fifteen, and August twenty-fourth, twenty fifteen. Do I have a motion to approve that? As presented?
I'll make that motion.
Thanks, Sue. You have a second.
Sure.
Elaine, thanks. That's you, please.
Sarah?
Yes.
Weitzel?
Yes.
Worley?
Yes.
Carter?
Yes. Moving on, communications. We've got some good news. Reports we'd like to acknowledge. I think we've got some.
We do. Please, please come forward, and I want to, all due respect. Shumpa. What we'd like to do is, Shumpa had donated bleachers, or tennis courts, we didn't have anywhere for our parents and those who came to watch the event. And there's a whole process. You'd think it was just a matter of donating bleachers and putting them in the ground, but there's a little bit more process, as you all know. We've got a lot of our own, and there are plenty of regulations. We're going to make sure that we met all of those regulations. And as a result, we now have some nice new bleachers on our tennis courts. And we want to extend a sincere thank you for your donation to the Ball Chatham School District.
Okay, moving on. More good news. We've got a donation. Ryan, Ben?
Well, it's good to be back. Very excited that I'm not going to be sitting here for two and a half hours. Most of you don't know, I did open a new business in Ball Chatham School District. It's a new bar, a gaming hardware called Glitter Drop. What I try to do every month is give a little bit back to the community. So for our first month, back in August, I actually picked the Ball Chatham School District, and we gave that five percent of our gaming revenue, which turned out to be seven hundred and thirty dollars and fourteen cents. So I had a big check made. We got that all squared away, so we could get that donated to you. And I was a neighbor of mine here last month, so that's why I pulled up behind and gave this paycheck to you. But we use it for a piece of equipment. We had some issues with the classrooms that I hooked up before I left my last year, and I was able to come in, did some free installation with the zoo, and got everything going. So that's what this is actually already used for.
Thank you.
Those are hard to get in those canisters that should have.
Yeah. It's good to see you. See ya.
Have a good news, all our agenda?
We do. We, um, we wanted to take, well, go ahead.
Oh, no.
No, no. You go first.
Oh, it's been a tradition in the district that in November, we honor our board members. And as a way of saying thank you for all that you do, we would like to donate, again, books to our libraries in your name. And so we do have some books here for you to sign, and again, thank you. And we appreciate how you do.
Thank you. We're happy to service. Okay, at this time, we have an opportunity for citizens to address the school board on any agenda item. Do they have anything they'd like to address? Nope? Okay, moving on then. We got consent agenda items five-one, zero-five thirteen. Anybody wish to pull any of them? Five-eleven, okay. Any others?
Yeah. It's a question, really, about the special board meeting on November second. Not, it's a question of clarification and information on the November second. So. Yeah, we pull it. And then I'll ask my question, and then.
Which means, is that? November second, five-fourth. Any other? Hey, we have a motion to approve five-one, five-thirteen, pulling out, five-fourth, and five-eleven. Have a second.
Second?
Thank you.
Yes, Sarah?
Yes.
Weitzel?
Worley?
Yes.
Riddick?
Yes.
Carter?
Yes.
Yes. Take five-fourth, the minutes in the special board meeting, November second.
Right. Actually, yeah, I just wanted to ask, the minutes reflected that the median ACT score was twenty-four, and then upon further research, Jim Lee advised me that the median score was twenty-three. So basically, the minutes as presented are correct, but I wanted to ask you, Mr. Lee, because there's a difference, I, because there's a difference in the scores, would you modify any of the comments that were made as part of this discussion?
I think other than the actual, no, I don't think I would.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure that our discussion applied to, the discussion we had in the meeting was also applicable to the new number of twenty-three. And I feel that's fine.
So is your question? Happen?
Yes. The minutes reflect what happened, but susceptible to the minutes, it was recalculated as a median score of twenty-three and not twenty-four. So today's meeting minutes should reflect that new score, the corrected score. And then my question was, were there comments that were made as we, recorded in the minutes? Do they still apply to the new number? And Jim, Mr. Lee said yes.
So you're good?
I am good.
Okay. So, a motion to approve, five-fourth.
I'll make that motion.
Okay.
Yes, Carter?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Weitzel?
Yes.
Worley?
Yes.
Riddick?
Yes.
Yes. Hey, five-one.
You know, we talked a lot about phones in the different schools, and my question was, and please forgive me, Josh, if I, or if you've said this before and I had forgotten, but I thought of recall that we were talking about making sure that whatever new phone systems we would install, the schools would be able to, for example, transfer a phone from one school to another. Does this system?
Yep.
Can we give us a chance for you to do that?
Yep.
Okay.
The three, we have three that's on MyTell that can do that currently, and then this new system would tie into those, basically. So, yep.
Okay.
Josh, what do you think of the DOIPs? So we do have a student network here?
Uh, yeah. Mm-hmm.
Any other questions then on five-one? Thanks, you have a second.
One second.
That's you, please.
Yes, Carter?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Weitzel?
Yes.
Worley?
Yes.
Riddick?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, moving on, personnel consent items six-one to six-eleven. Anybody wish to pull any of them? Karen Dunn, do I have a motion to approve this presented, man?
I'll make that motion.
You have a second.
Second.
Yep, Weitzel?
Yes.
Worley?
Yes.
Riddick?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Carter?
Yes. All right, moving on to whole business. We got a construction update. Cory?
Good evening. So just to give a brief update on what's happened and what's going to come up this month and the end of the year. So, all the, the ACT vinyl floor, vinyl composite tile has been complete in all the classrooms and the corridors. We actually had an above ceiling inspection today from the engineers, and so we're going to start dropping ceiling tile. All the, all, or almost all of the aluminum curtain wall framing is complete on the lower vestibule areas. Sidewalks are complete. The site grading is about ninety percent complete. All the marker boards are installed, and all of our casework has started today, showed up on site, so. One thing we're missing to be fully in the dry is our glass on the high parts, as well as the vestibule areas. So the only thing that we'll, we'll be working on is the lockers, all the toilet partitions, toilet accessories, all that stuff, grab bars, and then the vestibule area, the four outer vestibule areas. Once we get that glass in, we'll be able to finish those areas. Like I said, we got caseworks in the beginning, and it'll be done probably the middle of December, and then we're going to get started on lockers beginning of December, and then I'd say get the glass set, so. As far as the financials, we had one change from last month. Mike gave us a directive to run, have a fiber run into the new server slash data room. For one reason or another, it was originally in the project, and then it was taken out, and now it's back in, so. But as far as, it only impacted the changes, it didn't impact anything else, so. And we're just over eighty percent built out, and, you know, just over point-six percent of the change orders, which continues to grow. We're still looking at end of the year, end of the year, beginning of next first week to be pretty complete. We're gonna, I'm gonna start scheduling the gym on waxing floors and stuff like that, so hopefully we'll be able to start moving some stuff in over Christmas break. We'll still be working, but just keep on moving some stuff in, so. What kind of cost are you looking at on that fiber? It's on there. Yeah, forty-three, forty-three hundred just over. And Cardinal Technologies installed it. We carried it on our end, just to keep it part of the project, but we're just pulling it out if it tends to. Any other questions?
I have a question with Dr. Wood. Could you schedule the time which the board can to load the new facility?
Absolutely.
And I have another question. So when does school start the second semester, Dr. Wood?
Fifth January, yeah.
So is the anticipated date for occupancy, like February first, or?
Oh, no. We're, I'm planning on you guys being able to use it that first month of this semester.
Oh. Okay, so are we doing okay on furniture?
I, I don't know, that would be my.
The furniture's been ordered.
Oh, great. Okay, good.
I think, what's the lead time on the gym?
Four, six.
Four, seven.
Okay, good. Oh, good.
Any other? Well, you guys good? Thank you.
Thank you.
Mike?
This is got the big sheet up again. Not a whole lot to report this month. We are down to actually three projects still remaining on the sheet. The generator at the middle school, the generator's complete and operational, but part of that project was moving a mechanical unit from GES over to there, but it's impacted by the completion of the high school. So that's going to happen most likely over Christmas break, so we'll be able to complete that out, not on that amount. Of course, Cory just reported on the high school addition. If we are done towards the end of December, early January, we will need to get the Regional Office of Education to walk through and approve everything for occupancy, but normally that just happens over a day or two. So then it's just a matter of making sure that all the floors and everything are waxed and ready to move in, so. It can, like Cory says, that could most likely happen anytime, I'm guessing towards the end of January, maybe.
Oh, would that be in December?
In December.
End of, well, yeah, the end of December, but so that you can occupy sometime in there.
Okay, so maybe it won't be ready for the January.
Well, it's gonna be real close to, you know, by the time we get it all cleaned up and everything, it may not be just.
Okay.
We're right on the edge.
That's fine.
But it's coming together pretty well.
I think at some point, we need to have a conversation about just how much we want to occupy. Because we start talking about, there's going to be quite a shuffling of rooms, basically what we're looking at, and I don't know if in the middle of January, we want to start shifting every, all these rooms. But it's a, it's something we can sit down and talk about, and there are some things we can occupy right away that we have planned, but based on the kind of domino effect that we're going to have by moving some areas, and then those rooms that become open in the old wing, moving other departments together that are not now together. I don't know if we want to mess with all that in the middle of the, in the middle of the semester, but I would recommend a conversation about it.
Well, the model deal is, yeah, just what strategy it is, what's going to be occupied, what are going to be the? The good news is, we'll, we'll, we'll be ready, you know, just, you know, and most likely the entire addition, not just part of it, so. Just up to you to how you want it, and then. The last project on here, the door and hardware project, that's still not shaded in. Dr. Wood, you have some occupancy papers that you and Steve need to sign today. Just give them to Mike, and he'll send those to the Regional Office. That project is complete, it's just not final out. We punched it out, there's just final paperwork, final pay applications to process on that, so. Phase three is coming very quickly to a close on the ball projects, including the high school additions, so.
Do they get any questions from Mike? Thank you. Okay, moving on to seven-two, we got the purchase of Chromebooks.
On the, this purchase, it was basically to get approved the two-hundred Chromebooks for all the teaching staff throughout the school district. So with our one-to-one, we initially planned that our, we felt like our first goal is prepare our teachers for the students having these, so two hundred and fifty will allow us to give every teaching, teacher in the district a Google Chromebook, just to start preparing for that one-to-one conversion, so.
This is where we tell the D U S about the three. We can't. So to bring everybody up to speed, I filled the Finance Committee in at the Finance Committee meeting. Typically, every year, school districts file for E-rate. Typically, a school district such as ours would always get category one, which is your data and your phones. Category two, in the old system, how it worked is based upon your free and reduced amount, and Chatham would never hit it. In the old system, they started at the top, funded all the schools. By the time it hit Chatham, the money was gone. Here, they started at the top, funded all the schools. By the time they got to Chatham, it was gone. This year, they, they did put a couple billion dollars into E-rate to help start getting schools more internet equipped, and we hit this year. So this, we, we, based on our post-discount, so what they'll do is they'll take the enrollment of all our buildings, and according to your enrollment of that building, you're allowed a this dollar amount. Out of that dollar amount, then depending on where we fall, free and reduced, we get this percent. We fall at fifty percent. So overall, we were funded, well, the post-discount, we were funded three hundred and forty-three thousand, two hundred and seventy-five dollars. We will get that, which is kind of a matching amount. We spend that, they'll match that. The good news was, we'd also put several of those items on the summer work that we had done. So we turned that four-seventy-one in, and we should be getting back two hundred and thirty-six thousand, nine hundred and twenty-one dollars on the projects that we did this summer. That gives us a remainder of a hundred and six thousand, three hundred and fifty-three that basically we moved through FY sixteen through nineteen, but that strictly can only be used for infrastructure and network upgrades and things like that. But we still have those items out there that now we can, we know that that money will be available here to help us. That was the good news.
Also, just wanted to mention that we're very fortunate, because not only are, is Josh and his staff doing an excellent job, making sure that we're, you know, keeping the promise of upgrading all of our technology, not only for our students, but our staff as well, but also the cooperation of the Ball Chatham Education Foundation, who is working with us as well, to help us match some of our purchases, so that we can do additional Chromebooks in the classroom. And we'll get it up to you in a little bit later, but it's been a real cooperative effort, so we're very appreciative, not only to Josh, and of course, our community, but also very appreciative to our Education Foundation for assisting us, making sure that those tools that are necessary for our teachers to teach and for our students to wear, so. Thank you.
May I just ask a question? Is this E-rate program federal or state?
Federal.
Federal, okay. And so, in essence, we spent like four hundred plus in the summer, and we get a rebate, two thirty-six, nine hundred. So like over half has been reimbursed, so to speak.
So to speak, on the one project, and you could look at it like that.
And so then, so then we have a hundred and six K, a hundred and six thousand. So really, it, and maybe you mentioned the total, and I missed it. It's three hundred.
The three hundred and forty-three, two hundred and seventy-five, and that's post your discount. So really, they take your dollar amount, which is basically double that, but since our free and reduce is at a certain percent, they only say you're getting fifty percent.
Oh, I got it.
So they'll allow you that amount of money, but you only get fifty percent of your.
Right, okay. Thanks. Is a motion in?
No other questions?
No, for me, please.
Okay, then do I have a motion to approve?
I would like to make the motion to approve this. Very pleased that we are able to give all of our teaching staff the Chromebook that will allow them to do the damage.
Do I have a motion to approve?
I'll, I'll second it.
Thank you. That's you, please.
Yes, Worley?
Yes.
You, Riddick?
Yes.
Carter? Sarah?
Yes.
Weitzel?
Yes.
Carter?
Yes. Thank you, Josh.
No problem.
Stay here for seven thirty, T H S.
Yeah, next item. So, I'm not type, I guess, that if we save that, a type of money, we had a list of things that we had to improve on, even before I got here, this list was even made. And one of the things that I'm there was our voice, and obviously, we approved, the Chatham Elementary wasn't as big as a project, and that's why I believe you'll put the GHS phones in the action, is the phones at the high school basically need the same type of upgrade. The phones at the high school, it's a five to seven, well, probably, and I'd leap towards, more towards a seven-year-old phone system, that currently, we can't get any of the parts for through a manufacturer, we have to go through a third party. We, again, looking to longevity of the system and to move forward to get all of our schools on the single type of phone solution, where we can start basically having one call base, if you will. Somebody calls in, if you need GHS, or Glenwood High School Press one, and it goes straight over there. They say, call the, call the district office, they transfer, call, can go directly there. Moving them on, again, we saved money, I felt like, because we're getting back E-rate, not to mention, I do have the numbers that I know that we spent and allocated towards the projects this summer that came in about thirty-two grand less than what we allocated for, so I feel like the money was there, so we, we're getting some money back, so I think now's a prime time to take care of this problem that we have. The, the, the problem as well, we found out the new addition currently has zero phones allocated towards it, so we're going to have to do something if, if Mr. Lee, which I would think, well, what phones and communication done in that, in that new addition? So if we, we kind of are at that place, do we, do we start putting money in into a system, and you're talking at least five, probably five to seven, to get the new addition to talk to the old system? Start putting that type of money into the system that is going to be out the door, and then we replace it next year and think, well, we just wasted five to seven thousand dollars to the, for now, we should just took care of this when we had the chance. So that's my feeling, and we, we got a little bit of money back. We, we, as a district, felt like, hey, we had this money to put towards the technology improvements. I think that we need to focus on taking care of this one as well.
So you're saying that would be in this figure?
Yes. So the, that figure there would take care of the new addition and the old addition together. And the same deal, it'd be on the MyTell, and really, I talked to some of you guys back this, we can start really pushing the overall goal of getting us on one system. We can connect GES and GHS right away, because they share the same campus, have a direct connection between the two. Overall, my, my goal is to consolidate those into one phone system, to where we basically play on a monthly average right now, a thousand dollars a month for phones at GHS. If we start moving towards this new technology, we can lock in a rate, a monthly rate of, I think, tops three eighty-nine a month, which would serve us both schools. So we'd probably pay on, even if we played on average three eighty-nine at GES, we're basically going to put in GHS and have cost free monthly, so.
Do I get any questions?
Yeah, can you do that for our personal phone bills?
I wish I could do it for mine. I wish I could do it for Mike.
No, it's all Josh, he did such a great job. No, it's all Josh who did such a great job saving us money that he's going to start taking over some financials.
Absolutely not.
Sounds good.
Okay, do I have a motion to approve? Phone system at GHS at thirty-eight, three ninety, seventy-nine? I have a second. Second, thanks, Lisa, best of the three.
Yep, you ready, Bitch? Carter?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yep.
Weitzel?
Yes.
Worley?
Yes.
Yes. Thanks, John.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
All right, new business, moving on. We, eight-one. Try to move this into good news, but we had to put it under new business. I'm happy to say that we have a contract with the C D A to approve tonight. Thrilled to say that, actually. It's been a long, rewarding process, and we value our teachers, and we're glad that we're at this point.
I just asked, might I just say a few words? I've been involved in the process now for approximately five months. And oftentimes, negotiations can be contentious. They can be productive, sometimes they cannot be productive. I must say, even though there were times in which we disagreed or had a difference in opinion, they were always collaborative, collaborative, respectful. We have great, great teachers and staff in this district. I also would like to just speak with the half of the board as well. Just the willingness to sit down and talk. As well as, I think Bob Cox is in the room. Bob, to you and your team as well. Appreciate extending a cordial collaborative process the entire way. We want to go to the point that we were able to be fiscally responsible and also acknowledge all the efforts of our outstanding staff in this district. So I as a colleague participated in the entire process and with our central office staff as well. Spent many, 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 many hours in this process, so thank you.
So, do you have a motion to approve this contract?
I'd like to make the motion to approve the contract with great pleasure.
Thank you. One second. Thanks, Lisa. Betsy, please.
Yes, Worley?
Yes.
You ready, Bitch?
Yes.
Carter?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Weitzel?
Yes.
Yes. Oh, thanks.
Thank you all very much.
Okay, moving on, eight-two. We've got, actually, does she step over yet?
No, she's going to be a little bit late, so we can call her off. She says she'll be here by seven thirty.
Are you ready, Tracy?
We are now way too fast.
Oh, yeah. Want us to jump, or do you want to go ahead and do that?
Right.
Okay.
I think now that Josh has saved us money and there's a giant check, I know how we can pay for this. And it worked out well for us.
Well, I guess I'm not going to go to full screen. Well, good evening. For those of you that don't know me, my name's Tracy Kimball, and I'm an instructional coach here in the district. Specifically, I'm the K-12 math coach. I'm going to give you a lot of information this evening. Some of it's going to be educational, some background knowledge, some of it's just personal anecdotes. But I don't want to bury the lead at all. The purpose and focus of this presentation is that the math committee and I recommend that the Board of Education adopt and fund new math textbooks for grades one through twelve. So the first place I really want to start is for the Board of Education vision and goals. I believe that purchasing new math textbooks can meet three of those goals directly and impact one of them indirectly. When we talk about purchasing new textbooks, it's going to impact the delivery of the curriculum, the effectiveness of that delivery, and it is because of our evaluation of the program that we're asking for the purchase of new textbooks. It impacts those three goals, one-one, one-two, and one-three, directly. However, I do think that it impacts the fourth goal indirectly. Because one of the ways that we can retain quality teachers is to give them the proper tools to do their job. So before we begin really the meat of this, I kind of feel like I need to give you some insight as to what my professional philosophy is regarding a viable, sustainable curriculum. One that will last the tested time, regardless of whether it's history, or science, or math. So when I think about it, I think about, like I'm a carpenter, like I'm building a house. So the first thing I'm going to do is I'm going to put down a foundation. So there's three pillars that build a strong curriculum. The first one is that we have a common scope and sequence. So all of our teachers know what they need to teach, when they need to teach it. The second thing that we need to have is common assessments so that you know that regardless of who the teacher is, that all the students at one grade level are getting assessed in a similar way. And the third thing that we need is we need a strong administration. Ones that know what good math teaching looks like, and they're able to provide the teachers with critical feedback through formative and summative evaluations. That's the three pillars of a foundation. And we have that. We've been working on that for a couple of years. We know our scope and sequence, common assessment, and we have a strong administration. So then you start putting the frame around the house. This is the nuances of education. This is the stuff we don't learn when we're in college. Like really, what is data analysis? Not just looking at the numbers, but instead, what does that mean about our students' learning? Second, we need strong coaching and leaderships, but not just from the coaches and from the administration. We have to build a network of people. It can be a support system that can make good teachers great and help fill the gaps when we're struggling. We've done that. We have mentoring programs. I have a group of math leaders that are phenomenal, and they are the support system within the buildings. And the last thing is, we need to learn how to hone teacher craft a little bit. So Mr. Sarah, at the last board meeting, you made a very insightful comment regarding the role of a manager. You said, "A manager's job is to find a person's strength and place them in a position that accentuates their strength." I am not a manager. It is well above my pay grade to determine where teachers go. But while I have a finger in each one of those little pockets, honing teacher craft, I feel like is a large part of my job. So once the administration places a teacher into a job, then part of my job is to determine what are their strengths, to work with them hand-in-hand to help make them be the best math teacher that they can be. Now, I'm not a manager, but I'm a distributor. That's all I do. If we're building a house, I'm building a tool belt. That's all I'm doing for them. And we talk about it frequently. All I'm doing is placing tools in your tool belt to help you solve any problem that is in front of you. I might place them through professional development, instructional strategies, guided math, grouping, data analysis. That's what my job is. Now, the best tool is a textbook. A textbook is not a curriculum. Our curriculum in this district is set by Common Core standards, College ACT readiness standards, AP National standards. And the high standards we have at Ball Chatham so that we can continue to be the beacon of academic excellence in Central Illinois. That determines our curriculum. But the tool that we use to implement that curriculum is a variety of things. But the textbook is like, it's like the gold nugget of tools. No, it's the Swiss Army knife of tools. Put it right on the front of that tool belt. We've got all these things that we're ready to go, and you've got your Swiss Army knife right there. It's got all the trinkets and gadgets. It's got everything you need to help meet the needs of the students below, above, the students who have English as a second language. That's the key to our textbook. Not that it drives our curriculum, but it's the go-to tool. Now, it doesn't solve all of our problems, but it's the one we go to. So when we're talking about getting a new textbook, that's the focus that I have here, is it's a tool that we can help utilize this in our classroom. So what's the reality of the situation we're in today? And what, where are we? This is a student activity book. Now, as a parent, I made an assumption that was completely wrong. I thought this was ancillary, supplementary. I thought it was extra. When my kiddos came home with it, I thought, well, there's a textbook in the classroom, and when they want to reteach, or enrich, or give some homework, this is the book they used. It wasn't until I started walking hand-in-hand with the elementary teachers that I realized I was way off base. There is no book in the classroom. This is the textbook. This is what they use. It just happens to look like a workbook. It's what's called a consumable write-in textbook. This is the Swiss Army knife. They use this for guided practice, independent practice, below level, above level, students that use, that have English as a second language, students with I U Ps, Bible courses. We can utilize this in a variety of ways in our classroom. It's not extra. It is the material. Well, in March, I was contacted by the administration. Because they're consumable, we reorder them every year, which makes sense, no surprises. And in March, I was contacted, the company's not going to be able to fill our order. Because this book is copyrighted two thousand and six. They're not really making them anymore, so they can't fill our order. Well, no longer, well, my job was impacted swiftly and directly, as was theirs. Because no longer could I focus on the nuances of education, the instructional strategies, the data analysis, the alignment of the curriculum. Now we were in survival mode. What is the minimum that we need from this to implement the curriculum we have in front of us? What's the, what's the bare bones? To just function as a district? Not below, not above, not English as a second language, the minimum. And then for the next three months, the math leaders flagged and tagged them. We need to find out exactly what we need in this district, the minimum. Remember, bare bones. Well, I've got our bare bones right here. That's our bare bones. I've got all five grade levels, one, two, three, four, five. This is the reality of the situation. This is the bare bones. No tests, no review, no quizzes, no group work, no below level, definitely no above level. This is functionality. This is the reality. Not only was my job and their job swiftly and dramatically impacted, the coffee service job was swiftly and dramatically impacted here. Because, on average, we have three hundred and fifty-eight students. Specifically, the mean is three hundred and fifty-eight. Oh, let me come back over here. The median is three hundred and fifty-eight point three zero seven repeating. That's a lot of kids. So if this is grades one through five, and I need to have, and this is for one kiddo, one kiddo, fourth grade, right there. And I'm going to have to have three hundred and fifty-eight of them. Fun fact, from there to there, it's a twenty-two by twenty-two foot room, which means there's four hundred and eighty-four square feet of carpeting on this floor. If I were to make three hundred and fifty-eight of these, it will take up two hundred and thirty-four square feet, about half of the room. You know what, that's not a very good visual. So let's do this. Let's make three hundred and fifty-eight of them and put them right on top of each other and push them way up into the sky. Because this is a seven-and-a-half-inch-high piece of paper. That column is two hundred and twenty-three feet, nine inches tall. That's a lot of paper. You know, Mr. Moveney just got done talking about the one-to-one initiative. Mrs. Kimball, Mrs. Kimball, why don't we just use the online books? What does forego the paper altogether? Because that seems cumbersome. Absolutely. Oh, there isn't any. Because it's two thousand and six, we have no teacher online access, and we have no student online access. Oh my goodness, she's painting a picture. Now, in grades six through twelve, we have a different issue. It's not better or worse, it's definitely different. Because in grades six through twelve, we use a hardback book. Our Swiss Army knife looks different. But hardback books alone create their own issue. But let's discuss curriculum for just a minute. When we took on Common Core, ACT College Readiness, AP National Standards, and our own personal standards, we saw some compacting. So as you move up the grades to about eighth grade, then there's, there's large holes and large gaps, and we had to write entire units. So we couldn't even use the tool that we had in front of us for much of our lessons. Let alone the fact that when you have books and you live with a thirteen-year-old boy, and I do, everything they own gets torn up. So examples of some of our textbooks that we have at the middle and the high school might look like this. Oh my gosh, well, we can't just blame the boys. I want to, but they are a decade old. So what do we do? When they start falling apart, which is completely normal, we send them off to get rebound. Okay, a lot cheaper, ten to twelve dollars to get this rebound. And sometimes it works. This is an example of a lovely book that's been rebounded, perfectly good book, great. The problem is, is it creates a whole different set of issues that nobody's aware of. Poor Mrs. Yockers will start teaching her class, and she'll say, "Class, open up your books, page seventy-two." What? There's no page numbers on this book. Because they've been cut off. We have a pile of textbooks at the middle school that have no page numbers on them. Because when they went to rebind them, they had to cut them. And they stupid silly people cut off pages. Okay, whole different set of issues. Okay, so why don't we use the online edition? Because we have that. Well, at the middle school, we mostly use Galenco. As described by our thirteen-year-old students, it's spotty at best. Any one given night, one student can get on and the other one cannot, for reasons unknowns to me, because I'm not a tech person. But then our upper level at the middle school, onto high school, we mostly use MacDougal-Litel. Well, I can tell you right now, we've never had access for pre-algebra. But Algebra I, Geometry, and Algebra II, we were told by the rep that we're going to lose access this month. Now, fingers crossed, it's the twenty-third. Hasn't happened yet, but I don't know. And then our upper echelon classes, pre-calculus, AP Calc, AP Statistics, they've never had it. No teacher, no student. So as we push towards this one-to-one initiative, if we don't do something, you will have zero students that have access to online books for mathematics. That is quite a picture I painted. You know, it reminds me, my husband loves to have fires in our fire pit in the backyard. And every fall, we have these fires in our fire pit. So one day he was gone, and I decided, you know what? I'm going to get the fire pit all ready for him so we can have a nice fire tonight. But I live in town, so I have to buy my wood at like Menards, or Lowe's, or Casey's. And if you buy it there, you know they only sell bundles by the log. Well, I'm a strong, independent woman, I can chop wood. So I'm at home, and I decide that I'm going to make some kindling. Because anybody that builds a fire knows you can't start a fire with just newspaper and giant logs. So I'm going to go ahead and make some kindling. The problem is, is I don't have an axe, and I don't have a saw. But I'm going to do it. So I used a serrated steak knife to make kindling. So what does this mean? Number one, I'm stubborn. Something that took me an hour and a half should have only taken me five minutes. I became, it was laborious. I became angry, I became frustrated, I cut myself, and let alone, I ruined the knife. I mean, the knife is toast. It was because I wasn't using the right tool. You know, that's what I feel like we're doing to our math teachers sometimes. We want them to create this fire, this, this lifelong learning, this ember of love of mathematics, and you're giving them a log and a steak knife and saying, "Good luck." Now, they're stubborn like me, they're doing it. The things that should only take five minutes are taking them hours to do, just because we don't have the right tool. So that's the reality of the situation. So that's the reality of the situation. So then your question probably is, "Wow, that seems pretty bleak. Why haven't we bought books? We, we didn't buy books. Is it really just because of the money?" Yeah. In 1975, Illinois started the Illinois Textbook Loan Program. Phenomenal program. This is a program where they provided money to the schools, public and non-public schools, for secular books. And they provided it based on enrollment. You had to meet some requirements, but that didn't, that wasn't a big deal. They provided it based on enrollment. So what we did at Ball Chatham was we started a rotation. Science, history, English, math. Science, history, English, math. Oh, good my, okay. Well, the problem was, I, I knew I was gonna get new math textbooks as a math teacher every four to six years. And we did. We got our, our textbooks in 2007 under the Illinois Textbook Loan Program. Phenomenal program. $42.8 million in this fund. It serviced 2.1 million students in the state of Illinois, 164,000 educators. And the last year of the program, they bought 849,000 instructional items. Well, in 2009, when Chris Cook was the state superintendent and Pat Quinn was the governor, the Illinois General Assembly said, "Hey, we need to do some budget cuts. Can you cut this program in half?" And Chris Cook did him one better. So for the fiscal year 2010, they lined item at zero. They did not cut the program, they just pledged $0 for it. So we went from $42.8 million down to zero. 2011, schools petitioned. They said, "Please, bring it back." And they did not pass, it did not pass. So, we used to have money, $42.8 million, which came up to roughly $40 a kid for us. And that was used to defer the cost of purchasing new textbooks. And then it all went away. So then I wanted to know, have you guys bought textbooks since we left the Illinois Textbook Loan Program? And I really found two areas that you bought textbooks. You bought them for history, and then you bought them for the creation of two classes. So in March, according to my research of your board docs, in March of 2011, you purchased history books for the high school in a presentation given to you by Chris Vethr, which was the system. All right, he was an administrator at the high school, and Brent Duggins. Then in April, you purchased textbooks for the middle school history. That's when they were grades six, seven, and eight in a presentation given by Mr. Viola, who was an assistant principal at the middle school at the time. And then in May, you purchased textbooks for GIS. That's when GIS was grades four and five in a presentation given by Dr. Carrie Cox and Stacy Larson. So you bought history books. And then we had two classes that were created at the high school. Critical reading class, and we purchased $7,000. And then journalism. Once they got created, they needed to have some classes, or some books. And this is all I could find. So, a side note, I don't, I don't know what we're doing for our K-3 teachers because the last textbook I know that we may have bought for them was 2007. So this is what we've done. Okay, Kimball, you, you painted a picture here. All right? And now I know the historical perspective. So what's the process? So what did you, what was the process that we went through here? So when I went through this process, you should know, this freaked me out. I was overwhelmed and a little petrified because I participated in 2007 as a member, but I've never facilitated it. And you can ask Dr. Wood. The very first time we met face-to-face, August 5th, 2015, at Meet the Community Night, as soon as I shook his hand, I set a meeting with him. Said, "Are we getting new textbooks?" Because I knew, it's a lot of work that's in front of us. And I have to have a big picture in front of me. So, after I had the big picture formed, and I met with him and got administrative approval, we began the process. Your textbook committee is made up of 37 members, roughly three teachers per grade level. These teachers were chosen because they are your math leaders. Phenomenal group of people to work with. They understand Common Core, they understand alignment, they know how to unpack, they understand what the kids have coming in, they know what they're supposed to know when they go out of their grade levels. Who better to look at textbooks than people that understand curriculum? After the committee is chosen, I still needed to give them a little bit of education. So I provided them with some guidelines after they were approved. Here's the big picture. The teachers need to review textbooks, then they need to make sure that they teach a lesson from the textbook, and then they'll need to vote. There's your three steps. Seems pretty easy. Why is our presentation so long? I don't understand. So then I said, "Well, how are we going to review these textbooks? If we're gonna review textbooks, we need to make sure that we're following what they want." In your board docs, and like any good teacher, I've saved your homework till the end because I knew you guys would be flipping through it. But, but any, yeah, I looked in the board docs and we first have our textbook approval request form, which you will have in your board packet, signed and ready to go. That's a requirement. And then, I found a rubric to use to appraise the textbooks, to review them. Quite honestly, I found the rubric to be simple and over-general and quite antiquated. It says correlated to the Illinois learning standards. So unbeknownst to the 37 members of the committee, I made their job literally four times harder when I created a four-page rubric that was much more comprehensive. It includes the organization of the material, the content, the inclusionary aspects, and the alignment to our current curriculum. That rubric will be provided to you in your board packet. So each teacher was required to go through each textbook and rate this, rate them on this rubric. After they rated them on the rubric, each teacher was required to teach a lesson from this textbook. They're required to look at online components. And we met, and we met, and we met. I don't know how many faculty meetings I pulled these people out of because they met with me instead. But I can tell you, with 37 teachers, each one spent eight to 11 school hours with zero release days. So this is all happening during PLC and SIP days. That's cumulatively greater than 329 cumulative hours. Really, one hour at a time. That only talks about what happened during PLC and during the SIP day. That does not include what they did at home or when I found out they were having lunch meetings without me. Viewing of online samples, because I gave them zero time to look at online samples. When we have an opportunity to collaborate, that's what we're gonna do. And we had two dinner activities where they could come and meet the publishers and ask questions at those dinner activities. That's all outside of this, let alone the amount of time it took them to plan the lesson to teach from each one of these, teach the lesson, solicit in, uh, feedback from the, from the students, and to collect that anecdotal data. So it's really a lot greater than 329 hours. It's a lot of work. While they were doing that, I contacted all the people that are currently using the textbooks. So I wanted to get honest feedback from real teachers that are out there using the book to find out, what is the good, the bad, and the ugly of this book? I received responses from these schools. And every time I received a response, I placed it in a document and I provided to the teachers. This was part of our review process. Some anecdotal data from schools out there. Then on November 6th, I became nervous and Mr. Moveney and I had a meeting to check system infrastructure. If we're gonna go one-to-one, and we're gonna have all of this technical, um, all these technical components, we need to make sure that this all fits together. And you should know, he's a rock star. Because he knew people that used some of the programs and he reached out to former colleagues to ask them the good, the bad, and the ugly of the technical components. Took a huge deal off my plate. So 100% appreciate all of that work. All right. So, what did we look at? Well, that's a lot of publishers. But we didn't look at all those. And the reason why we didn't look at all those is because so many of them don't exist anymore. Did you know, fun fact, that from the '60s through the '80s, it's called the golden era of publishing? That is when all the publishers, small and big, really made a pretty penny. And the reason why they made so much money is because the amount of people that went back to college grew so much during that time. In 1963, there were only 4.8 million students in college. But in 1990, there were 13.7 million students in college. Even during the recession in the '80s, adults would choose to go back to school. Well, that just makes this a haven for publishers. Small companies could build. Well, what happens? Just like with any kind of bubble, it bursts. In the '90s, several, three big things happened. Number one, our rate of change was not the same. It almost tripled from '63 to '90. But in 1990, again, there were 13.7. In 1999, there were 14.8. It only went up about a million. Also, used textbook companies started to get a lot of business. So I'm in college and I have a choice between a new book that costs 75 or a used book that costs 12 and has a lot of the answers in it. I'm gonna choose the used book that costs 12. But the real thing that impacted them was the influx of the digital age. With the influx of the digital age, we had a huge problem because these are paper companies. So they don't, they don't want digital. They were, had their fingers crossed that this would all go away. And because of their painstakingly slow conversion to the digital age, many of them got gobbled up into four major companies. Pearson, McGraw-Hill, and Hooten-Mifflin. Really, three take up 80%. Syngage is really our upper-level, uh, college-level textbook publishing company. So, these are the books that we looked at per grade level, and these are the parent companies of those textbooks. Please remember, they reviewed these textbooks using a rubric. They were required to do the math, and then I checked their math. They had to teach a lesson from the rubric. They had to solicit, uh, feedback from the students. They had to look at online samples. Many of them contacted the reps on their own. They had lunch meetings, they met after school. We constantly talked about what the good, the bad, and the ugly. We made pros and cons lists. And we then voted. And when we voted, we ended up with grades one through five, my math, which is McGraw-Hill. Grades six through eight, Glencoe math, which is McGraw-Hill. And then in grades nine through 12, it's kinda split. Algebra I, Algebra II is McGraw-Hill. Geometry, really likes Hooten-Mifflin Hardcore. Pause. I did a gap analysis to make sure that it was okay to go from one publisher to the other one, that there would be no content lost, and there was not. And then, for our upper-level classes, pre-calculus and calculus chose Syngage, while statistics chose BFW. It's $468,163.10. I threw up in my mouth a little bit when I hit equal on my calculator. It was very upsetting. So I did the math again, and again, and again. But we'll come back to that number in just a minute. I provided in your board packet the list of complimentary materials. So I'm not gonna go through that whole list, but I wanna make a couple of notes. I realize your number's 200-plus thousand dollars of complimentary materials, but there's some things that have not been calculated into that. All right. So, the things that I'd like to point out, there's three of them. One of them happened today, okay? First of all, if we're talking about consumable textbooks, you should know shipping is the hidden cost. That's what they don't tell you about. It's the thing you suddenly get the bill and you're like, "Why is it 20 grand? I don't understand." So, that is a hidden cost. I tried very hard to snake out all the hidden costs to figure out what they were. So, with tactics I'm not too proud of, I was able to negotiate a couple of things. Number one, we would have to pay shipping the first year. But they're consumables, so they're supposed to ship them every year. This $468,000 is not a one-shot deal. This is a five-year plan. This is every book, this is online access, this is PD, this is technical support, everything we need for grades one through 12 for five years. Not one year. But, hidden costs, each year they have to mail us the new textbooks. Ooh, 20 grand here, 20 grand there. Okay, no, that's not gonna work for me. So I got that we would have to pay shipping the first year, and year two, three, four, and five, shipping would be free. Then the second thing I got in regards to shipping that just happened today that's not even up here is they normally charge us 10% for shipping. Now, I only made this deal with McGraw-Hill. They're the biggest one that we're dealing with here. The other ones, their accounts are so small that they don't feel like they need to negotiate with me. But McGraw-Hill, they want our business. So, the second thing was, I negotiated with them down to 5%. So I cut shipping in half for the first year. So I cut shipping in half for the first year to 5% and then I got rid of year two, three, four, and five. The second thing that's a huge issue for us is the wacko enrollment we have going on in the elementary. Your kindergarten's got 382, but first grade's only got 309. Well, if this is a five-year deal, I gotta make sure I got textbooks for that 382 when they get in fourth grade. That means I've gotta order extra textbook. Hidden costs, that's gotta order. Well, again, with tactics I'm not so proud of. I negotiated that instead of ordering per grade level, we order 1,800 first through fifth grade, and each year we adjust them according to the enrollments. and each year we adjust them according to the enrollments. That way, we don't have to order extra and have a bunch of them sitting on the shelf. We can then adjust them according to enrollment. These costs right here are not calculated in your savings of two-hundred-six-thousand dollars ninety-two, or two-hundred-six-thousand nine, nine-hundred-twelve dollars and sixty-five cents. The ones in the circle, the shipping, not calculated in there. And I think those are hidden costs that we need to focus on. So four-hundred-and-sixty-eight thousand dollars, again, I know, it's a lot of money. I know, I know, I'm not sleeping tonight, I know. But it's a fixed cost, and it's a five-year plan. So the idea being that, over the course of the five years, we can recoup the money. Well, one of the things that McGraw-Hill has offered in the final negotiations that I had with her was this. I said, "There's no way I can sell this. I can't sell this in one shot." And she made this offer. She will do deferred payments and let us do two years, pay half and half. She did one better. She said, "If you have any money left on June thirtieth, and you wanna buy money with this year," she goes, "you can buy some now and then pay sixteen, seventeen, and seventeen, eighteen, rather than one check for four-hundred-and-sixty-eight thousand." Now, I'm exaggerating a bit because McGraw-Hill doesn't have our entire contract. Because remember, we've got Cengage and BFW. So the idea here is, I want you to think about how you can recoup the money. Well, each year we charge our students a registration fee. I can tell you right now, eighth grade seniors, it's a hundred-and-fifty-five dollars. That is not the tech, technology fee. That is not the parking pass, even though we only live four blocks away. That is none of those extras, not being in sports, that is the registration fee. And if you were to open the student handbook in grades K through four, it even says textbook rental fee. And I think that's a hundred-and-twenty-five dollars. So I want you to think about recouping the money. So if I'm charging a hundred-and-twenty-five to a hundred-and-fifty-five dollars to our students as a registration or as a textbook rental fee, and there's six, or four-thousand-six-hundred-and-fifty-three students that attend this school district estimated next school year, four-thousand-three-hundred-and-fifteen of them are gonna benefit from this, I can recoup the money in one year. I'm not asking you to charge extra, I'm just saying, think about it this way. Each kiddo, take a hundred bucks out of that registration fee and put it in a little bucket over here, and you can recoup it in one year. But boy, that doesn't leave a lot of money left. So since McGraw-Hill offered us a two-year, you'll think about it over two years. Fifty bucks for each kid. Okay, that's a little better. You know what? The life of this program is five years. So if you really wanna think about it, if it's a five-year plan, and we're getting books for five years, and online assessments for five years, and all of our tech support for five years, coming down to twenty bucks a kid, I can recoup that, that's the number I like. That's a lot better than four-hundred-and-sixty-eight thousand. So when I'm looking at that, that's something I can deal with, and thinking about recouping the money. And you should know, a five-year deal's not the only deal on the table. You can absolutely go with the one-year bundle. It's a lot cheaper upfront, because all the shipping's not gonna be free. And this number is not accurate, because this is only McGraw-Hill. This is not BFW, this is not Hooten-Mifflin, this is not Cengage. This is only McGraw-Hill. This is how much it would cost at the end of five years, eight-hundred-and-fifty-seven thousand, five-hundred-and-fifty dollars and sixty cents with one-year bundles plus shipping every year. There's no way that I can muster up that deal again. Wow, wait a minute, Mrs. Kimball, I think you're just making up these numbers. The high school uses hardback books, there's no way they're gonna charge them sixteen grand each year. That's how much it costs for one-year subscription for online access, for just Algebra one and two. That's not even geometry, pre-algebra, or pre-calculus, calculus, or statistics. So it makes financial sense for us to choose a larger bundle than it does to buy many smaller bundles. It's like we're shopping at Costco, okay? I'm gonna get the big roll of toilet paper. Well, when I started this whole thing, I talked to you about what I refer to as the educational foundation trinity. Common scope and sequence, common assessments, formative evaluations, and then the nuances. We're just putting up the crown of the house, talking about data analysis, coaching leadership, and honing teacher craft. This is what makes a good curriculum, viable, sustainable curriculum. This is what does it. But we need to have the proper tools on our tool belt if we're gonna build this house. So, teacher quality matters. It'll matter even more when teachers are using material of proven quality. Every opportunity for schools to get more bang for their career, their budget, is the function of choosing the right product. And that's the key that I wanna focus on here. Because again, this is just a tool. There's so many people that help me with this, and I couldn't even start to thank them all, but I would be remiss if I did not tell you what an outstanding group of thirty-seven math leaders that we have in this district. I am humbled and inspired by each of you every single day, and thank you for all of your hard work. Thank you, thank you, thank you. So, it is the math committee and my recommendation that the Board of Education, please, consider purchasing and adopting math textbooks for grades one through twelve for the next five years. You know, I think it's time to reevaluate. It's time for me to go to Ace Hardware and buy an axe or a saw. I think it's time for us as a district to maybe take a look at our Swiss Army knife, because I think it's broken. So, I am certain there are a variety of questions, and I am ready to either answer them or get you the answer.
I kept this dark by saying this is the most amazing presentation I've heard in my seven years of this.
That is not a question, Mrs. Winkler.
And I kept it, it's so, I am just, besides the fact that I'm totally blown away by you, but I have been for a number of years. I'm blown away by all of our wonderful math leaders here in this room, because it's just, I have to read this, you're just gonna have to be patient with me. This was our school board conference weekend. Our final speaker yesterday talked about the hero effect, and this, and this is all of you. And being your best when it matters the most. An H for hero, heroes help people, millstones attached. Tracy talked about all the hours that you put in, and I, I just, I cried. E for heroes create an exceptional experience for the people they serve, and I know that you do that every day. R, heroes take responsibility for their attitude, actions, and results. And clearly, you are doing this. Oh, heroes see the light through the lens of optimism. And if this wasn't an optimistic presentation, and this was our speaker yesterday, our speaker on Saturday, the president of the University of Maryland, Dr. Oh, Dobrowski, Dobrowski, Dr. Edmund Dobrowski. He talked about the importance of STEM. He said, and people talk to him about Common Core, and, oh, it's too hard, it's too hard, you know, our, our people of color, our students of color come to a hard time this, and he is a person of color. He said, "I was on those committees that created those questions, so I don't wanna hear anything about it." He's a math, and he's a math teacher first and foremost, and I'm blown away, I don't know.
I do. So, okay, what I'm gonna know is, was it grade-specific when you asked the teachers to, you know, prepare a lesson from one of the books that they proposed? Did they first make the presentation to the whole group of math teachers or just the group that, you know, they teach?
So that's a great question. The question that I'm gonna answer is, I'm gonna clarify so that you understand. When I told them they had to teach a lesson, they had to teach it to their students. So they had to pick the lesson individually that met their needs, that was part of their curriculum, something they thought would fly in their classroom. So they taught it to their students. They didn't teach it to the other teachers. And then they came back as a group of three to say, "This is the lesson I did, oh my gosh, it flopped." Or, "This one was awesome," or, "I love this book," or, "I don't like this about this book." That's where the collaborative component came into place. So they had to physically teach it to their class. Yes, sir.
Did you look into the cost of electronic-only books?
Yes.
And what is the difference?
I don't have that calculated difference.
I mean, I understand we don't have the platform for it yet, but with the one-to-one that we've been discussing, I'm just wondering, as a technology-type person, you know, if you buy hardbound books, which I love hardbound books, you know, where it feels like where it smells. But, when you're editing this stuff, which some publishers tend to do all the time, you know, they change their books, I'm just wondering if the investment would be, make more sense buying electronically so when they update those books, we can get the update without having to ship books.
Yeah, they've become, publishing companies have become very wise in that insofar as whether you buy a hardback book, and you're always going to pay for site licenses. So, if you were saying, "I only want them online," thinking you're going to avoid the cost of purchasing the hard material, they factor that in, they say, "No, we're still gonna pay for that site license." So, it's a point well-taken, but they, and it may have some reduction, but they're still going to charge you that site license.
I do think that that is a valid direction to go, since I personally and professionally feel like we're three, we're a couple of years out from that. That's why I think that if we went with this bundle, it would be at that point that we could reevaluate. But I think what I hear you say doesn't make sense in the math world. Let me give you, and Dr. Wood addressed it. If we purchase a two-thousand-six site license for that book, they won't let us see the seven, and the eight, and the nine, and the ten. When they update it, they don't give you the new edition. You would have to buy it, and you'd have to buy it for the whole district. Does that make sense? So, it would be at a cheaper price, I would think, but I don't have the difference. Is that something that you want?
No, I'm just intrigued by how we go about that. And it brings another question that, because I didn't know we had such a disparity of textbooks in the district. I know that you're making your pitch for math, and it was a great pitch, by the way. But do we have the same problem across the district, in all departments, so we can fish it, or just in there?
Well, one of the things that we've spoken about was that, you know, many, many districts start off on a cycle. When they have the textbook loan program, it was natural. You got into the cycle, you bring in textbooks, that money evaporates long as long as. The answer to the question is that many schools are imperative. They got off on a cycle. And so, I don't think all China is any different than any other district, where they go off on a cycle. And although we may have recurring issues with some of our materials, I know schools that have textbooks and materials that are twelve, fifteen-year-old, and so you're not gonna get into that situation. So, what we've talked about, and what they're going to continue to do, is we establish a cycle, so at least stay as current as possible, because that's an expectation from our community. But it should be an expectation that we, you know, make sure that all of our teachers have these arabs. You knew I was gonna have a question, but I'm almost ready to ask it.
Well, then you got what I was selling.
I haven't heard my question.
So, part of the pitch back in eleven, when we put in all the new technology, was you shouldn't need books anymore. Forget that that was said. How does, how does it come together? Do you not use online for math? Do we do this, do we use both?
I think that's a valid question. You know, I think that when we talk about one-to-one, and I'm gonna be perfectly honest with you here, when we talk about one-to-one, there's a lot of great advantages, some serious awesomeness that goes on online. But can you tell me that a first grader having to do a math on a computer is better than with a piece of paper and you sitting there with them, holding their hand, working one-to-one with them? There's a huge difference. There's a disconnect when a kiddo's in front of a computer. So when we talk about math and technology, it's gonna be blended. It's gonna be an integration between them. Because we need to have the relationship with the student, because every student struggles and has some fears of some sort with mathematics. And so I need to create a relationship with them. If I place them in front of a computer solely, then what I've done is I've lost the connection with them. And I've lost the ability to get them to try to overcome and persevere through the difficult times that are mathematics. So, so I think it's a blended, and it's gonna be a learning curve for us as well. Because if you think about it, we're dealing with the two-thousand-six edition right now. So we have little or no exposure to our online stuff. It was one of the things I was scared of, actually. That's why I created a rubric. Because we have been working with such antiquated stuff, they were gonna get caught up in the bells and the whistles. Whoa, look at this, it does this and it does that. It reminds me of when we, when we bought our new car. My husband and I drive our cars into the ground. I showed up to buy the new car, and I said, "I have two requirements. It must have a CD player, and it must have Bluetooth." And the guy thought I was an idiot. He's like, "They all have it now." So if you were to say, "It must have online components, and it must be aligned to Common Core," any rep's gonna go, "Everybody has that now, we all have for a while." So I was concerned about the bells and whistles kinda taking them, taking them away. It's gonna be a learning curve. And that, hopefully, is where we can walk hand in hand as we traverse through these waters to make sure that we are doing this together, you know, and that we are, that's our professional development. That's the nuances of education. And that's gonna be a paradigm shift for a lot of our teachers, is how are we gonna do this, and how is this gonna work? But I think it's what's best for our kids, is to learn that, that integrated component.
Kinda what I'm hearing is, they'll bring us books each year, take our old ones back.
No, we keep them. No, the consumable textbooks.
Oh, okay, okay.
These guys.
Fair enough, okay. So how does this five-year plan stop what you showed at the beginning where the books fall apart and stuff?
So, we would get, this is really high school, okay? We would still get the textbooks for the high school, and you still have thirteen-year-old boys taking these home. So a decade from now, the books that we are proving right now are probably gonna look like this guy, okay? But, they'll also have online components. So hopefully, as we get done, get closer to the end of the five years, we can focus on the online components, just so.
And just to add a question, one of the things that you find when you purchase or adopt things of this nature is that we might have classroom sets. So, there's more to be less taken back and forth. Because oftentimes, if you have a classroom, there'll be times when they do take them home. But there is less wearing chair because of the online.
Yeah.
We're getting a set of books for five-plus years, the hardcover.
Yes.
And then a new workbook, you call it.
Yes.
Every year.
Every year.
Okay.
That's what.
I guess that somehow.
Well, I started talking really fast, because I started to start using.
How about our books we have now? Is there any trading value?
Pretty sure I'm getting trouble for burning school material. So let me tell you what your process is, because of course, no decision. There's no way that I would ever want anybody to make a decision this quickly. We've been dealing with this for a year. Process is that the books are gonna sit out here for thirty days. Today is November twenty-third, your next board meeting is December twenty-first. That's not thirty days. So I will be at your December twenty-first board meeting, because you're gonna have questions between now and then. And you can ask me those questions if Harry's Robert Rules of Orders allow you to do that, okay? And you can ask me those questions, and I can either answer them or I can get you the answer. And I have two of the reps on retainer, so that when we have the January fourth meeting, if I can't answer the questions, I've asked them to be here. And that's when you would make a decision about what you wanna do. That give you some time? Any other questions?
So I do have one more question. So, so in essence, the teachers were building a Common Core textbook, correct? But, because the textbooks that we had from two-thousand-and-six didn't really incorporate all of the Common Core approach?
They were building units that you could put together in a textbook, yeah?
No, but I mean, in essence, do some of those piles of papers, are they, you know, prepare some to work themselves, to make it Common Core compatible?
Those papers right there?
Yeah.
No, that's what's not in there. We don't have all the Common Core units in here. This is essentially just the textbook. Not even the Common Core stuff that we had to add in. This is the bare bones of the student activity book that was there. I understand now, you were pointing over there, and I.
No, so that's something that's on the board for your ma, the math committee? Or how do you handle, are you comfortable that those bare-bones textbooks adequately incorporate all of the Common Core?
That's why I wanted to purchase.
Those books do. Yeah, but Common Core's been in existence for.
What's been in existence?
Common Core.
Been in existence?
For like, three years.
None of those have Common Core in them. So the old Common Core that our teachers are currently teaching are ones that they have developed.
Yes, but I'm gonna pause for a second, 'cause I wanna make sure, I wanna make sure that you understand. Math is math is math.
Right, right.
Adding two digits to a two-digit.
Right.
Whether we call it Illinois Learning Standards or Common Core Standards, is still adding a two-digit to a two-digit. Now, you read all the things on the internet about people poking fun at it and learning different ways. It's actually very clever, because we can go with the different modalities so the students can understand it. But in reality, math is math. So eventually, we're gonna get to the algorithm of adding a two-digit plus a two-digit. We're gonna explore a variety of ways to do it, through manipulatives, concrete, pictures, those kind of things. We're gonna get to the two-digit plus the two-digit. Does that make sense? Okay. So Common Core isn't just all these fancy things, because math is math. Factory polynomials stinks whether we're doing Common Core or Illinois Learning Standards.
Put that on a shirt. So if we don't understand what's in the books, then we still don't know.
So, and I guess I do have a question, but not for you, it's for us. Is this in the budget, and we can say yes?
Well, you've not been asked to say yes tonight.
Correct.
Is it in which budget, FY16?
Yes.
I've never met this lady, so it's not.
He is lying.
I would lie to a school board? This lady called today, and she said, "I want to go before closing." That's all she said.
Too fast.
And now I know why. Yes, certainly can be put in the budget. This, and, but I would caution, this, you're talking math. I'm an English teacher, don't forget me. Science, foreign language, music, art, history. Don't leave anybody out.
Did you have any more questions for me?
You guys good, Tracy? I wanna thank you and your thirty-seventeen members.
Thank you.
Outstanding job. Anything else you need, Tracy, like, if you'd like to get you?
No, no. Forty-six thousand. Put her on a big check for me, too. All right, no, I'm.
Four-hundred-and-six.
Just don't lie.
Just play daddy, that's all you're doing.
Just math, don't worry.
Could you bring a little more passion?
Yes, yeah.
Uh, we're gonna backtrack now to, uh. Eight-two, which used to be eight-one, which now is Anne from.
I don't wanna have my textbooks.
Me?
Anne, you're up. Tracy, hold it. You're very good in your own way.
I don't have a pool PowerPoint either, I wanna know, like, she needs to do training or something.
Well, we found another strength, whatever you wanna coach.
Okay, so we have before you the resolution that I talked about when I was here last month. This is a resolution authorizing up to ten million dollars of refunding funds, which is simply a refund and restructuring of those two-thousand-and-five bonds. So this is not producing any construction dollars, this is being done simply for two reasons. One, the O5 fund's about standing at higher interest rates than the interest rates available in the market today. Two, and more importantly, we need to restructure the payments on these funds to smooth out your tax rate to the seventy-cent target that was promised to voters in two-thousand-and-twelve. This has been part of the two-thousand-and-twelve referendum plan from the very start. It's just being done at the end of the process because of the call date or the prepayment date on the O5 fund. It's just being done at the end of the process because of the call date or the prepayment date on the O-five bond. We wanted to wait until we basically got on top of that prepayment date. So it didn't cost you extra to refinance in advance of that date. So this is really the last piece of the referendum plan. So all this resolution does is authorize us to move forward. This sets, we call it a parameter of resolution. This sets basically not to exceed on everything. So you'll see a five percent interest rate reference here. You'll see up to ten million dollars worth of bonds referenced in here. All of these are basically caps. And everything will be finalized. Um, right now, we're scheduled for December ninth for post-sale. That's when the final interest rates would be set and the final terms would be set. And, um, Dr. Wood and Steve would sign off on, uh, the final parameter at that time. And this resolution delegates that power to them. And then the bonds would be closed in early January. And then it would be done. And we would revise the levy with the clerk right after the closing in January. And that would lock it in for the tax bills that would go out next month. So with that, I'll be number, getting any more questions?
Okay, couple quick questions now. So what do you think, what, what's the rate hovering around right now? You say up to five percent, but it's surely gotta be less than five, cause. Oh, I just can email it to you.
I was ready.
Uh, two point seven. And remember that Albatros called Bill of America Bonds? What are we doing about interest rate funding in those?
You still have some outstanding, um.
Are we capped out, so we can't?
You're capped out as far as your bank qualified borrowing limitation goes. And the bank qualified limit is that ten million or less in calendar year.
Right.
And that saved you about a quarter of a percent, so that two point seven that I just quoted, you would be, you know, two point nine five if, if we weren't taking advantage of that ten million dollar limit. So essentially, you wouldn't, um, tap into refinancing more of the two thousand and ten Bill of America Bonds until a year from now.
Okay.
And then you, you have, I believe, less than ten million, less than ten million of those outstanding still. So we, we should grab the rest of those and you'd be done. It's not really, I mean, the federal government is sequestering part of your subsidies, you're not getting the full benefit of it. But it's not a very expensive penalty to you at this point, cause you don't have a ton of them left.
So we have, that will be our priority for the following year. It would be us.
So I don't have my package. And I swore it was about four and a half.
That's the minimum amount we need to do to restructure the levy, just to get to that seventy cents.
Okay.
Um, but if we can save more, which in today's interest rate environment, we can, like, right now, it's looking like it's going to be more like ninety-nine. Um, just because the interest rates are low enough that we can save money by refinancing more than the four and a half. So.
Do you go into the.
No, they're, that's still the O-five bonds. The O-five bonds are extending the amount of about twelve million. So, we'd be just taking as big a hunk of them as we can, that saves you money and that stays under the ten million dollar limit. So, the Fed me is, I'm, the market's obviously nervous about that. That's what I was talking about potentially, to maybe actually raise rates. We're intending to be in the market before that. Um, so I'm not anticipating any spike in rates or any negative market activity. But were that to happen, we'd have two choices, we can just downsize, go more just for the minimum amount that we need to do to, to serve the levy. Or we can just table it and wait until January or February if we think that would produce a better result. We just have to do this by February to, um, lock in the, the levy for next summer.
Thank you.
It's really warm, so.
Although I do not want me to.
And my kids will tell you, I am not.
Um, Anne was very helpful, I did go to what they call, it was like in, it was a classic pen. And, um, something new. But, um, basically, am I understanding your summary correctly? That when, um, the board finalizes the levy in December, that in essence may be the existing levy for an extra two years?
Yeah, what Susan was talking about is the presentation that you attended was about, um, the total property tax freeze that the General Assembly has been proposing and batting around. Um, since you guys are already tax capped, you know, a good portion of that bill wouldn't impact you because you're capped. And that's what the bill does, is it caps everybody. But it would subject you to the two-year freeze. So what that would mean is the operating levy you're setting next month, um, would be your operating budget, total dollars for operations for three fiscal years if the bill actually goes through. So it would impact, let's see, that would be levy, or I'm sorry, fiscal years seventeen, eighteen, and nineteen. Um, other than the fact you would get new revenue from new construction or a tip that would come off one. We're back on the statute. So you'd get new revenue for that. But as far as existing properties, you'd be frozen at the revenue those dollars pay, regardless of what happens to EME or CPI. Basically, it's eliminating that CPI growth factor that you used to get for two. Bill hasn't passed yet, but, um, there's a pretty high level of expectation that it will be part of the final budget package. It's just a question which levy year it'll.
So the, um, the revenue will be grossed, right? Not the tax rate?
Not the tax rate.
Except you.
Yeah, except you.
Yeah, right, right. You guys have obviously. Very helpful.
Any other questions? I believe we got a resolution.
Yes, sir, we need to roll, pump it.
I'll make that motion to, to approve the resolution providing for the issue of not to exceed ten million dollars general obligation to refinance school on Series twenty sixteen.
That's appropriate, don't need to read this?
Nope. That's what I knew, it's just that inappropriate.
Hey, we have a motion to. I'll second.
Yep, Carter.
Yes.
Sarah.
Yes.
White soul.
Yes.
Worley.
Yes.
Ribbit.
Yes.
Cop.
Yes. Thank you. Mr. Lee, we got a trip coming up that you wanna talk about?
We do. You're not gonna get the, you're supposed to arm that presentation. You're gonna get a funny night.
You got anything to do about?
That's right. Uh, I believe this will be about the fifth year that the speech team is asking to go to a competition. I mean, they go to them all the time, but this will require traveling across state boundaries. So we always bring it to you to get the okay, and so you are aware that's what we're doing. Uh, it is funded ninety-five percent by these speech boosters. Uh, they're gonna go to Bowling Gravel. I'd like to compete in, it was a pretty good national tournament, and they'll see schools from all over the country. Uh, the cost of the district would be the registration fee, which is not out of line for a big tournament at eight hundred, nine hundred dollars. Uh, everything else, transportation, food, hotels, will be taken care of by speech boosters. So they're just looking for your blessing to cross state lines, to participate. And what's been a very good tournament for them, for some of their kids who've been recognized in the, the offer scholarships based on their performance. I'll seek approval to do so.
So when it says an appropriate number of shun runs and weeks to hear, what's our rule?
There is a ruling on, but I put that in there because a few years ago it came up. And we just battered it around for a while. And we didn't, we didn't set a number, and hopefully there's a number of policy or anything. But I tell anybody that travels along that to get, I try to keep like one per, under ten students, say, you know, eight or nine. Just so, you know, we're not worried about things. And Mr. Carter, uh, sure does have plenty of chaperones.
And one to ten ratios. Any other question?
I'll make the motion to approve the. And I think if you need a debating coach, if for whatever reason, Mr. Carter decides not to do it, he means done it for a lot of years, does an excellent job, I not make this.
End motion.
Okay, Sarah.
Yes.
White soul.
Yes.
Worley.
Yes.
Ribbit.
Yes.
Carter.
Yes.
And cop.
Yes. Thanks, Mr. Lee.
Thank you.
Uh, looks like we're moving on to our levy presentation. Is it, is it true, Mr. Plow?
Yes, sir. I wasn't kidding about saying this lady insisted on going before me. But I was kidding when I said I didn't know her, she's, she came to my office forty-seven times. She's, she is, I told Dr. Woods, she's so good, she's scared. Do you get that fear? After having the presentations, all I have to say is any questions about the tax levy? You've seen where the money's going. The question is, how do you do this? I would submit that instead of Tracy building a house, she is in fact building a barn. And in that barn, you're going to put three mules. A federal mule, a state mule, and a local. And we're gonna be talking about the local mule. Uh, I'm not gonna read that document to you, I've got copies. Everybody left, but I got copies. This is the tax, this is the tax levy, you have a copy? Thirty pages here, thirty pages. And I think Anne just preempted me. Senate Bill three eighteen. Everybody that tells me, that knows anything about Springfield, it's going to pass, and it will be signed. And that's going to tax cap every, well, nine hundred and whatever, hundred and one counties. Hundred and one counties will be capped. And there will be a freeze for the local mule. The federal mule couldn't care less. State mule's getting sicker and sicker. And now the local mule, he's got a harness on him, but he can't pull. And that's where we are. Here's my question for you. Who's going to remove this tax cap? Senate Bill three eighteen passes. The schools start to hurt. Who's going to come forward and say, you know, that was a mistake? Federal mule? State mule? He's the one that did it to you. The state mule's telling the local mule, if you wanna change it for Ball Chatham, change it for Ball Chatham. And then they'll tell St. Clair County, where I'm from, you wanna change it? Change it. And I have to bring my taxes. I do this every time I do a tax audit. This is Russell Plow's tax bill. If I could move my house from O'Fallon, one seventy-nine Summerlin Ridge, to any place in Ball Chatham, my tax bill would go down from seven thousand one hundred to thirty-nine hundred dollars. Um, and I drive an hour and a half to pay that. So you are already doing super well as a local mule. Four dollars and fifty cents? Please. Minus, uh, five dollars and thirty-four cents, plus the library, plus the township, eight dollars. Three hundred thousand dollar house, seventy-one hundred bucks. I pay five hundred and ninety-three dollars and thirteen cents a month just for the privilege of being there. That pays nothing. So the local mule in this, in this town has done pretty well. Not gonna read the introduction to you, I am gonna say this. Page one, last paragraph, I very clearly tried to say to you as I'm passing through. Last paragraph says, I'm going to recommend this tax levy. Levy, not extension, levy. Levy's a request, extension's a demand. That's seven thousand one hundred and seventeen dollars and forty-eight cents is a demand, and not requesting it. It's a demand. What you're gonna do tonight is gonna set the hearing to do the levy, because I'm going, we, this administration's asking you to levy more than five percent over what you levied last time. The question is, who's going to remove it? You will. Eventually, you will. On page one, last paragraph, I say to you, with Dr. Woods' direction, ideally, you have nine funds, we use eight here, but most borough districts have nine. Ideally, you say, hey, fund, you take care of yourself. You get a dollar, she gets a dollar. If we co-mingle these funds, if you spend a dollar for it and I have to take it from him, we don't even know where it came from. So ideally, your nine funds should stand alone on its own. If the Ed Fund deficit spends, Ed Fund. Then you go inside the Ed Fund, inside the thumb, there's five thousand line items. You have a line item for electricity, whatever. You shouldn't borrow from electricity, pay water. Maybe the budget's not enough, you work on that. But you stay pure, is what I call pure. That paragraph says, this proposal assumes there is no PTEL. This is what you need to be doing for all nine funds. Each fund levies, each fund extends, each fund gets its revenues, gets its expenditures, comes out in June, you see how well it did. Then you can know who to go to. We should stop the interfund loan. Your auditor's gonna be here next month, she's gonna tell you, I hope. The interfund loan needs to stop. And in order to do that, we need to levy and extend and keep every fund separate. That's what that says on page one. If you'll go to the last page, and, and, that's if you'll put up the very last page. Thank you. This was done in the seventies, this was high-tech in the seventies. This is big stuff in the seventies, today, it's not. This is last year's rates. This is what was extended last year, there's our assessed valuation, six hundred and ninety-three million dollars. That's the assessed valuation, that's equalized valuation, it's three times that price, so you're only talking billion. But we get the levy on six hundred and ninety-three thousand dollars. That's what was extended last year, not levy. And that's, and so the Ed Fund got that much at that rate. And then the next pages up that you see explains every fund. No questions on those. Every fund's been explained to you. And I make debates, I make arguments, this guy and I've had arguments. First time I met this guy, we're arguing about transportation. Next month, when the auditor comes in, the only fund I'm concerned about is the transportation fund, FY fifteen. Rest of them did okay. Transportation were a little tough. So this is the way this works. This board, in December, will choose a column. And as a board member, you have to estimate how much is going, are we gonna grow? How much is this community going to grow? If it's gonna go, go one percent, one percent of that is that. Two percent, three, four, five, six. See it? This is your new property. This is your five-year meeting at Dr. Woods' instruction and approval. I spent a few hours at the county courthouse. And if you'll go to page, what page is it? Thirty. We'll come back to this, go to page thirty. Yeah, I made that, I'll do it from here. This is forty years. Forty years of levy and extension and rate for Ball Chatham. So nineteen seventy-six, seventy-seven school year, seventy-five, seventy-six tax year, there's your E-A, there's your assessed valuation. They didn't do, the only reason that new property doesn't exist is PTEL didn't exist. Same when PTEL starts, right here. And now new property starts. So then, th- this shows a difference between, this shows percentage. Watch how this community grew in seventy-six, seventy-seven. Nine percent, thirteen percent, one, two percent, eleven percent, seven percent. And it went down. Look here. In nineteen ninety-four school year, this community grew seventeen percent in, in houses. So this assessed valuation is going to tick the, and that means the local mule is getting good food, strong. So this assessed valuation is going to tick the, and that means the local mule is getting good food, strong. I made two points here. The yellow is not good. And the red is not good. In nineteen eighty-seven, eighty-eight, this board levy and the county clerk extended an increase of fifty cents. Fifty cents. Probably shouldn't do that. My house, if it were here, that would be five hundred dollars increase for me, thank you very much. Couple of years later, this board did twenty-three cents. Couple of years later, well, I know what happened here. You know why this yellow is here? Because when the geniuses in Springfield decided to do this thing called tax cap, they gave the schools a year notice. Well, if they came to you and said, next year, we're going to cap how much money you can, you can be in debt, it's going to be capped. You have a year. What do you do? You get in debt. And you bump into property taxes. And that's how, that's how it happened. But neither should you do this red. Now here's what happened in two thousand and three, two thousand and four, two thousand and five, two thousand and six, two thousand and seven, two thousand and eight. It went down the rate. We don't set the rate. This is what's going to happen in December. On page nineteen of that packet, you've got Dr. Wood, Russ Crowe, here's what we recommend you levy. Right next to it is the line, you don't like that levy, put in your own line. Knowing that whatever you go in there will affect the rate. Here, four cents was given back. Four cents on four hundred and eighty million dollars, divide that by a hundred, that's forty thousand dollars a penny, times five cents, two hundred thousand dollars. So the school board in two thousand, and I'm not being critical, this, this is just what it is. Whatever they levy in the, in the tax year two thousand and three, four, that board collected two hundred thousand dollars less from the local mule than it could have collected. And they did it again, and again, and again, and again. And I took my tax bill and said, ooh, I wonder if that saved me? Watch this. For every penny, see these four cents? For every penny that you take away from the tax bill at four hundred, what is it, four hundred and eight thousand? For every penny that you take from that rate, you divide that four eight by a hundred, forty thousand dollars. Five cents? See the way it works? Today, at, at a rate of six hundred and, I can't read it, ninety-three? That's six hundred and nine, six nine divide by a hundred? Sixty-nine thousand dollars. Every penny that's collected on that rate is sixty-nine thousand dollars. And I did some calculations just for the fun of, I didn't have time, we don't have time. What I'd like to do is go, go to the county assessor and say, how many houses do we have at thirty thousand? How many do we have at ninety thousand? How many do you have at a hundred and twenty thousand? How many do you have at two hundred thousand? My house is three hundred thousand. How many else do you have? But if you, if you take, just, my house, three hundred thousand dollars. A penny in this, if I move my house, which I'd love to do, move my house up here? You take a penny from me, it would cost me ten dollars. If my ten dollars would give this lady a pay raise of sixty-nine thousand dollars, would I give ten for a teacher? Sixty-nine thousand? Any homeowner in this community that owns a home, three hundred thousand dollars, knock on his door and say, would you give ten dollars, ten dollars to give the school of sixty-nine thousand? And ask him what they say? Of course you would. We've done better the last five years. See this? It's in the black. That means we bumped it a little. Not yellow, not fifty cents, but we bumped it one point four, two cents, one cent. Or is that three cents? I don't even know what that one is, four cents. What I did here is I added all of these. For the last five years, this district's bumped the rate because of its levy about seven pennies. So a thirty thousand dollar house would pay about seven dollars for those five years. Seven dollars a year. So if you had a thirty thousand dollar house, you'd pay seven dollars for five years. And every penny, even that thirty thousand dollar house, gets sixty-nine thousand dollars. With me? Now, if you're, okay, any questions on this, on this four years? Now let's go back to the matrix, please, which is thirty. Yes, sir.
If you look at those years where we're in the red, our new construction is higher. And, so that was a good thing, because we're noticing that our, our percent of change is going down, down, down here.
Oh, yeah.
So we're down two percent now.
Oh, yeah.
The interesting part is, back then, when we weren't collecting enough, we had thirty million in the bank. There were a lot of things going on there. And one of them, I think, is there was a lot more new growth.
Oh.
New property.
There are some, there are some school districts in Illinois that the assessed valuation, right outside East St. Louis, Bellville, the EAV, two billion dollars. They can't keep up with it. But PTAL is the answer.
Well, the thing we learned at Triple I this weekend, a couple of things, is I think you asked a rhetorical question, but I'm going to tell you what they said, was when they freeze local taxes, they're either going to raid, they're either going to implement a sales tax or raise our income taxes again, the one that we just lowered. So that's the answer. I didn't say it was right or wrong, but that's what they're predicting.
I couldn't, I.
So we're going to.
It might be, it might be an English teacher. It might be an answer, I'm not sure it's the answer, because I'm not sure you can assure me that if they raise income taxes, that Ball Chatham's going to get it. This is a local mule that you can double your money back guaranteeing. The state mule, I'm sure they told you at the state, I didn't go to Chicago, but I'll tell you what they told you. Well, we're not sure about that ninety-two percent. Well. I know the governor said we're going to get four categories. Well, guys, I've been in forty years. Yeah, yeah, yeah. This guy is money. And PTAL's taking it from you. So you'll never get me, convince me that PTAL's a good thing. I would make this point, it is PTAL, Property Tax Extension Limitation. It's not PITTAL, it's not Property Tax Levy Limitation. You can levy a billion in every fund, and I'm going to get it. But you could levy a billion in December. Just have to put it in paper. Go to that last, that, uh, it's the very, it's the, it's the thing that they do, Betsy, that you help me do. I'm not the inferiority voice. I'm not going to be. No, you want, that's, it's the other end.
Is it?
Yeah.
I didn't see it.
Yeah, it's at the very end. It is in fact the thing that goes in the paper on December the tenth. The notice of hearing. Now you're past, you're past.
This is what I've got on my last page.
It's in a separate attachment.
Oh.
Oh.
No. The only other thing are our tax rates and.
Is it, is it the truth in taxation?
It's right here.
There it is. It's just before those counties. It's, it's just before the counties.
Yeah, twenty-three.
Thank you, sir. There you go. Oh, back, 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 back.
Well.
Watch this. This is what English teachers notice. This is required by law. There'll be a big black square, you've got to do it no less than seven days, no more than fourteen days. You've got to tell the world you're going to be doing this. This is required, the language is required by law. English teachers read it this way. Watch what they say here. The corporate and special purpose property taxes extended for two fourteen was this. Next paragraph, the corporate, to be levied. Wait a minute. Why don't we do extension and extension, levy and levy? Why aren't we doing extension and levy? What do those two have anything to do with each other? And the answer is, when they first started doing this, it makes the percentage a lot. So everybody in Ball Chatham thinks that their property taxes, when you go up, twelve percent. They'll read that, and they'll say, they'll call you, and they'll say, my property taxes? Well, I pay seven thousand dollars, you won't be paying twelve percent more? You may be getting that call. And you say to them, no, it says extended and levy. We wish they'd say extended and extended, or levy and levy, that would be more fair. Ever met it? That's correct. This is what you got. And this is what you're asking for. And that percentage is the difference in what you got, what you're asking for, you're not going to get what you're asking for. But you're required to put it in paper. That way. Why? Because the state mule, the same for the local mule, take care of yourself. You pull this wagon. In fact, the state mule, I think, sometimes leaves the front of the wagon, gets back and crawls in the back of the wagon, and is pulled by the local mule. Like that. So go back now to the, to the, to thirty, please. Sorry about the confusion. Oh, I've given you every counting, every counting we can think of. Uh, no, the, uh, is it the, the, the greens, the green slide? Yeah, that. Now, this proposal, we presented to the finance lady. These are formulaic, except that fund, that fund, that fund, and that. See what happens with this fund? See, this, the way this works is this is one percent of that assessed valuation, times that rate is, gives this money, seven hundred dollars, seven hundred dollars. And we have ballooned that. We have deliberately ballooned that back to the nine funds. We've ballooned that because we want a working cash fund, health, life, safety, special ed, and lease, to have a little more money in it. And I explain that to you on every sheet. On every sheet. That we're spending money from health, life, safety, or from special ed, or from lease, and we take it out of the Ed Fund. And the Ed Fund needs to be pure. As pure as we can make it.
You're comfortable that you've got the mix pretty good.
Comfortable? This is a guess. But I, 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 here's, here's what I know. Do I, do you have a TIF that's coming off? Estimated, I estimated, I was thinking for what it's worth. I've got the TIF here, if you want to read it. It's about the size of a textbook. This is the TIF. It's estimated about seven point four million dollars. That'll be new construction. And then, if we get, uh-oh. Back to the other one with the, with the.
The history.
Is it right behind this one?
Yeah. Yeah, that one.
It's that one. If, if we get twelve million new construction, so we get twelve million new construction, which is what we got last time, and we get seven point four million TIF? Twenty million, divide by a hundred, nine hundred thousand dollars. That money they can't touch.
Why don't you run this?
I mean, I don't know. Because I can't, that's why. So. That's wrong. Who was I talking to today? Somebody's talking to me about computers today. Oh, I think it was, I took the, this is my computer when I started, this is my computer when I finished. Look. It's going to be more than one percent, isn't it? We've already got twenty million coming. So twenty million on six hundred ninety-three, you're already at seven thirteen. So it's going to be here if nothing else happens. Well, unless the building stops. But if the building continues as it has done, and they tell me they're still building, kind of picking up, you should pretend it's hope, he's part of your home. Thank you very much. I'll show you my tax bill. So you know it's going to be here. So it's going, it's going to be here, but I doubt seriously it's going to get here. So what does that mean? The higher the assessed valuation, the lower the rate. That's not what you asked for. It says what, if assessed valuation goes up to eight hundred million, we're going to be playing on the table. And this book is going to be a red thing, and next year, you're going to be calling it, they won't buy it. But I doubt seriously it's going to go eight hundred million. Is that eight hundred million? Yeah. I doubt seriously it gets eight hundred million. But I think it's going to be somewhere in between here and here. So what's the rate going to be? Now, you go this way, if you guess high assessed valuation and you levy these numbers, this rate's going to go up. Worst-case scenario, you guess K, you levy K, and TIF does some kind of lawsuit that holds it, and you don't get that, and the building, all the buildings collapse, and they say, we can't charge these people, so you lose that twenty million. All of a sudden, your EAV stays exactly the same, and you levy these dollars, we're going up. Maybe as much as eight, ten cents. That's not going to happen, is it? Well, let's say it won't happen. Probability it's not going to happen. You're going, if, this district's got almost twenty million dollars of new money coming in. You divide that by a hundred, you know how you do that, right? Your, your house is a third. My house is three hundred thousand. So I pay property tax on a hundred thousand. Divide by a hundred, multiply by four fifty, that's what I pay. So let, let's say everything freezes, we really made a mistake. Then these numbers are going to charge debt, make that go up. But now in comes PTAL to save the day. Because PTAL's going to come in and say, you asked for twenty-two million, that would make the rate go there. You can't go that much, so your twenty-two million is going to go to nineteen, what you just got. So nobody is going to be hurt in Ball Chatham. If I move my house up here, I wouldn't be hurt by your levying this, because PTAL's going to save it. But it's not going to help her.
I think that's key, that we explain to the community why we're wanting to, we're agreeing with you to levy the column K, is to capture the new construction, the TIF, because we have to levy for the TIF, I understand.
Yes, sir. You better levy, if you don't levy, you don't get it.
And then the CPI. So we're not trying to up their tax.
Dwayne, that's exactly your answer, correct? We've got a TIF coming off, we've got new construction that's not affected by PTAL, so we made this levy, and PTAL will come in and stop anything over the CPI of five percent, so you're not going to get killed.
And we, in Chicago, they, we learned also that it's good that we're at four point something rather than eight. And because if new construction stopped, we could instantly go to eight, because the rate can change just that fast.
Oh, yeah.
So we're being, we call it fiscal responsibility.
Listen, uh, can we have that? Let me show you how fiscally responsible you're, you're being. This is, I don't know if this is on here, Betsy, it's the one that we used, the, the. What's it called, Tracy? You told me today. AC. The Measures of Central Tendencies. It's going back to A. That's it. The mean, the median, and mode are right here. Can you lower that? There's, there are eighteen school districts in this county. And there's their tax rate. I don't know what happened to Waverly, but I, I picked two thousand and ten and two thousand and fifteen. Two thousand and ten is five eighty-one, and five years later, it's fifty cents low. So now I'm going to move my house to Waverly. Parking really good.
What you got going on there is small communities with, where the growth is changing, you know, if your values go down, your rate goes up really.
As, well, you know the counties that I gave you? I also included your counties. Look at Cahokia, look at East St. Louis, and you'll see tax rates at eleven dollars. Move by a house in East St. Louis. So look where you've been. In two thousand and ten, you were fourteen out of eighteen. In two thousand and fifteen, we are fourteen out of eighteen. The mean, median, and mode are the, what is it, Tracy?
Measures of Central Tendencies.
Are the Measures of Central Tendencies. Look, you're, you are below the mean. I mean, I'm just no country boy. At four fifty, you're below the mean. In two thousand and ten, you're below the mean in two thousand and fifteen. You're going to be below the mean in two thousand and sixteen. I don't care what you say, you're going to be, you're going to be below the mean. Bottom line is, you should have hired Doug Webber here just before PTAL did. And, and he would have hired me, we would have had to sit. The mode's four sixty-four. So you're doing very, very well as a board. If I were on this board, no one would criticize me about the tax rate. I'd carry that around with me. Stop and Kroger, take a look. Stop and Clover, take a look. I just happen to have this. If you don't like, if you don't like what I'm doing, move to AC Central, move to present plane, or move to Waverly. See how that works out for you. So we are recommending K, and I'm finished, unless you've got questions. And I hate following that lady. Not following her next year. I will not follow you next year. Any questions? You're recommending K. And here's what, all you have to do tonight is pass that notice, post it that you're gonna go over one oh five. And then you come in December and put any number up there you want. But, but we're, you can't, you can't not put the notice out and then decide you add any numbers. You must put the notice. And in the hearing, people can come in and yell at you for what you did. We recommend K. Questions? Thank you. Anybody wanna buy a house and ask?
Do you need a motion, sir?
Yes, sir, you do.
I knew, whatever you said.
You, you need, you need, you need, whatever you say. You need to make a motion to, to adopt Schedule K. And then the second motion you need to make is to put that in the paper and do that hearing. Both those have to be motions.
One with the motion to adopt column K.
As presented.
As passed the year ago.
And a tentative tax levy.
A tentative tax levy.
Do I have a second?
Michael, Orland, Durovic, Carter.
Yes.
Sarah.
Yep.
Yes. And I need a motion. There actually is a recommendation to set a truth in taxation hearing for December twenty-first, twenty fifteen at six thirty p.m. Because we want more. Uh, five percent greater than five point eight from our state. That's correct.
Orland.
Yes.
Durovic.
Yes.
Carter.
Yes.
Sarah.
Yes.
Mr. Clover, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Uh, next, Triple I conference update. Anybody like to comment on what they learned or what they saw or what they were able to take in this weekend up at the Triple I conference?
I'd like to thank our show higher folks for coming and opening up the general session and listening to the, I guess, and having the conversation. Thank you, Mr. Lee, for having us.
Absolutely, thank you for being in.
We were very proud of them.
Yes.
I attended the finance session and a lot of what Russ is talking about was passed on to, in that session as well. They also, Howie from TMA also talked about the political nature of the budget and what's going on, which was very interesting, very interesting. Also attended a session about email and social media and technology and how it can negatively, if not done appropriately, impact the board, the teachers, the students, and the community. So I know we do have a policy on email and subs that teachers use, but I think a reminder would be good for everybody. Also, in the bookstore, I met a gentleman who has written a book about school safety, Paul Timm. And this was three years of research in what schools need to do to make sure they are being secure. He talked about the use of cameras, where cameras should be and where they're not effective. And I would like for Randy to have this book and to look at it. Did you make sure he gets that?
Sure, absolutely. I had a session at District Two Nineteen that had taken two rooms in their school and basically gutted them, made them to quote STEM labs. STEM is science, technology, engineering, and math. And it was relatively cheap and it, I guess it was wonderful because now that students don't have to choose between drafting, medals, good work, the different thing, they learn it all in this lab at their own pace. And so that part was interesting. And then they started talking about how every class would have one or two girls in it. So they started recruiting girls. And they still couldn't get them to come, so they formed a whole separate unit for girls. And they had thirty-some sign up. And now, I don't remember how many years later, but the girls are actually outscoring the boys on, in engineering and some of these things. And these kids, male and female, are now, they're actually packing these things. They're hanging out in these labs and going to world competitions. And all I could think of was, we can do that. So I'm sure you're already way ahead of me. I just, I was impressed.
Just to your point, we've been having some discussions about STEM, have developed competitive robotics programs. And so those are things definitely on the horizon. We have the capability, we have the instructors that have Legos. Well, there's actually a Lego program, so that definitely has potential. So we'll, we'll pursue that future.
I got to go to a really good session on internal controls and fraud prevention. I was put on by Sickage and took away a lot of really good information that I was sharing with Russ. And hopefully we can get some policies and procedures in place so we make sure those things are prepared in the future.
I added, or added, value added. I attended about six different sessions. And two of the most particular ones to me was actually a value-added assessment. Since we're looking at pair of different things, we're developing many staff members. It's very good information that I wanted to, like it there. And the other one that I found extremely informative had to do with community engagement and how we engage the community. Not simply reporting output, actually having involved in the process beyond that of the board. So I thought that was great.
And I went to Anne Noble's. Financing in Anne Noble, it was a small group, so I got to ask some specific questions about our district and just had a, got a few more details, which was very helpful. It provided some understanding on the big, big picture of operating, levying for operating revenues and the bond and interest. I don't have to go into the details, but I could never figure out the two parts of it. Don't relate, that's the seven sources. They don't relate, so. I liked it. No, they're, they're not, no, they don't. Just some thoughts.
One of the things that a member from every school board is encouraged to do is, is to attend the delegate assembly, which takes, delegate assembly votes on resolutions put forth by school districts, which are passed by resolution committee that help the ISB formulate legislative positions through the coming years. And so I was very glad to have attended that. And I'd also like to say thank you to I fellow board members for attending this training. I know that there have been some concerns in the last several months about spending our dollars wisely on professional development. And it sounds actually quite a felt that they did receive value from this. Selfishly, as, as this year's Triple I conference hosts, we did have our highest paid attendance ever, our highest number of exhibitors. And I'm just, I'm glad the weekend was, was effective for our listeners to attend.
Very good. Sounds like you guys are a lot of ways. I thought it was ten. Stayed home, made Brandon feel like he was lucked out.
Yes, and we wish Brandon well. Has not been here for medical reasons and we wish him well and happiness too.
Yes, absolutely. Okay. Moving on to communications for future board meeting dates. Facilities and grounds meeting coming up December second. Twenty-first is a regular board meeting. January fourth, transportation. January twenty-fifth, our January regular board meeting. Do you mind taking that or not?
Oh, finance meeting is December seventeenth.
We'll adjust to that.
I don't know. Is that?
Yeah, that's scheduled.
Okay.
We've got it scheduled, we need to adjust to that.
Okay. Okay, that's good.
Okay, moving on, citizens. It's an opportunity to address the school board and turn any topic, if anybody wants to. Now, your eyes. Okay. With that, I need a motion to adjourn. Have a second.